Good evening, everyone. Today, July 22, 2025. I would like to call the Utilities Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Hollenstuh?
Present.
Present. Counselor McLean?
Present.
Present. Counselor Hogan?
Present.
Present. Counselor Mezimadri?
Present.
Present. Counselor Meany? Absent.
Okay, we have three items on the agenda, Madam Clerk. Please read the first one.
We have from National Grid, Stone Place, to relocate one joint-owned pole approximately 25 feet at 27 Stone Place.
Is there anybody here wish to speak in favor? In favor? Sir, please approach the podium with your name, address for the record, please.
Sure, my name's Isaiah Talbot. I live at 25 Stone Place, and I'm in favor of it. As a matter of fact, there's also a telephone pole at number 17 that should also be moved on the sidewalk, probably about two or three feet in one direction to get out of the street there at Stone Place. But yes, I'm in favor of the moving of that telephone pole at, in front of me, 25 Stone Place to the end of the street there at 27. And also considering, can we do something about that one at number 17?
Thank you, sir, just take your seat. Anybody here is from National Grid? Sir, approach the podium, please. The Stone Place. Name, address first, please.
My name is John Jankowski, 170 Medford Street in Malden, Mass. I'm representing National Grid. The customer is upgrading his electrical service. The existing service, the air trespass, and that's a dead-end pole, so we have to extend it about 25 feet because it's an air trespass on the existing service.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody here wish to speak in favor? Any more in favor? In favor, saying now the part of the hearing is closed. Anybody here wish to speak in opposition? Opposition? Opposition, saying now the part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
Approved by Counselor Hogan?
Second.
Second by Counselor McLean. Say aye.
Aye.
Petition carries. What's the second one?
We have from National Grid, Shepherd Street, at the intersection of Alley Street, to install conduit and conductors for service to 149-151 Shepherd Street.
Again, John Jankowski, 170 Medford Street in Malden, Mass. It's a new building at that address. We'd have to, customer requests as a secondary siphon service, so we'll have to, customer has to dig on public property just to provide new service.
Anybody here wish to speak in favor? Name, address for the record, please.
James Connors. I own the property, and I'd like to get electricity, so we just need the underground.
Thank you so much. Anybody wish to speak in favor? Favor, saying now the part of the hearing is closed. Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Opposition? Opposition, saying now the part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the committee? Counselor Hogan, this is your ward, sir.
Before I make a motion to approve, could I have National Grid come up again, please?
Sir, National Grid, please.
When will this service be installed?
We have to get the municipal inspection from the wire inspector, and once that's done, then we'll, the customer will dig on the public property.
How, what's that time?
It, we have to get the municipal inspection from the wire inspector.
We're ready to get this property up and running, so we want to try to get this moving here, all right?
Yeah, customer has to do that work, and then they'll hook them up. All right, definitely. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Approved by Counselor Hogan?
Second.
Second by Counselor Natasha Mezimadri. Say aye.
Aye.
Petition carries. What's the third one, Madam Clerk?
We have a petition from First Light Group. Petition of First Light Group to trench and install PVC conduit beginning at Boston Street to a proposed handhole at 6 Rawlin Ave and continue northerly to the utility pole.
It's the first time I've seen this new company, First Light Group. Any representative from this company, please? Sir, approach the podium with your name and address, please.
Bill Conway, 201, Boston Post Road, Marlboro.
Can you give us a brief explanation of this project, please?
Sure, we're just trying to link our network, existing network on Boston Street to Rawlin Ave and then continue to Kerwin Circle.
Okay.
And it's supposed to provide telecommunications service.
All right, sir, just take your seat. Maybe there will be questions from the counselors. Anybody wish to speak in favor? In favor? Saying now the part of the hearing is closed. Anybody here wish to speak in opposition? Opposition? Saying now the part of the hearing is closed. Any question from the counselor? Counsel President Walsh.
Thank you. This, this petition's in my ward. I just, a couple of things I want to add. I want the streets put back appropriately, the way that we need to, the way they were, number one. And another, number two, this area sees a lot of traffic for the schools. We would like to know if this could be completed before the school season started.
Did you hear that, sir? Because we will put this in stipulation before we approve.
Yes, sir. When I spoke to the counselor, we had discussed doing it when school was out or weekends, whatever, whatever the city recommended and would require.
Thank you. Committee members will make sure that this stipulation will be added before we vote. What's, what's the wish of the committee?
A motion approved with stipulations.
With stipulation to finish this before school opens. And any second for that?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor McLean. Say aye.
Aye.
Petition carries. What is this new and old business, Madam Clerk?
No other business.
What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Licensing committee for Tuesday, July 22nd. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Field?
Present.
Present. Counselor Hogan?
Present.
Present. Counselor Net?
Present.
Present. Counselor Hollenstuh?
Present.
Present. Counselor Mezimadri?
Present.
Perfect attendance.
We have a new taxi operator, Hector Martinez Lara.
Okay, thank you for being here. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
We have a motion approved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye, opposed. That license is granted, Mr. Martinez Lara, and it is ready downstairs in the clerk's office. Counselor Motul?
Henry Abview.
Okay, I'll say.
Please explain it.
Yep.
Henry Abview?
Thank you.
Hey, we have a new livery company, Laioa A., 130 Avenue. He's the owner and also an operator.
Here, okay. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Second, any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That livery company license is granted. It is ready downstairs right now. You want to go get it in the clerk's office? Thank you.
We have another livery operator, Wonder Dews, 72 Lewis Street. Wonder Dews.
Dews, Wonder? Anybody here representing 72 Lewis Street? Anyone here for 72 Lewis Street? Dews, Wonder? None? What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
Second, non-debatable, all in favor to table. Aye, opposed. That license has been tabled.
We have a Class II auto dealer transfer from Bonia Motors to a new owner at 1071 Western Ave, Action Motors LLC. Gregory Simone Jr. is the owner.
Okay. Right. Counselor Hogan?
Yes, he did reach out to me. I was actually on vacation, but I know the property very well, and I'd just like to make a motion to approve and welcome him to Ward 6.
Okay, well, this is, follow with the, any stipulations or anything? Just current?
The current stipulations that are on there, in that area.
Okay. We have a motion to approve with the current stipulations that are on the business. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion or questions for the gentleman? None, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed. That license is granted and is ready downstairs in the clerk's office. Thank you. Thank you.
We have an Autobody Auto Repair Flambo new owner at 882 Western Ave or, let's see, Western Ave Autobody. Owner is Arkadi Danielan.
Thank you. Counselor Hogan, is that you?
Same thing. He reached out to me also, and I'd like to make a motion to approve on him, too.
Okay, we have a motion.
Welcome him to Ward 6, too.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
The Ward 6 counselor, seconded by the Ward 4 counselor. Any questions or discussion? None, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed. That license is granted and is ready right now downstairs in the clerk's office. Thank you.
Counselor Field, someone new just came into the chamber.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Hey, we have a new Flambo license at 63 Goodrich Street, BNB Motorsports. Owner Benny Groian. Oh, which one is Benny?
Who's Benny? Benny's in the middle? Okay, that's Ward 2 or 3. Is that Ward 2? Counselor Motul?
I'm not part of this as a committee, but I do approve of this. I'd like to ask my colleagues to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any questions or discussions for the owners?
I got a question. Is that a security next to him or what?
Good. Thank you for being here. We, all in favor to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That license is granted and is ready downstairs. Good luck. Thank you. We'll circle back if we can. Sir, are you, Dews, Wonder? Is that your name? Okay. Do we have a motion to take that off the table? Anybody?
We'll take a motion to take that off the table.
It's a livery operator for a new license who's, he made it before I closed the meeting. We have a motion to take it off the table. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Second. All in favor to take it off the table?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Madam Clerk, you want to read that one again?
Wonder Dews at 72 Lewis Street for a new livery.
That's you, correct? Okay, what's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion or questions? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That license is granted now and not tabled, and it is ready downstairs in the clerk's office. Thank you. All right, on to extended hours.
Okay. First extended hour table from June 17th is 122 Boston Street, Noria. Gas station and kiosk open from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Okay. Now that you're here, why don't you come to the podium, state your name and your position with Noria?
My name's Daniel Galahoun. I am a district manager for Noria.
The district manager for 122 Boston Street, Noria?
Yes, sir.
I did stop by, I was at Noria not long ago.
Which one?
Boston Street.
Okay.
Did you get my card?
Which card?
My business, my card, my city card.
I did not stop last.
I, I'll give you the reason why I stopped. I was pumping gas. There was a lot of litter on your property. We have a litter concern on Boston Street. I brought to the, I brought that to the attention of the clerk. I handed her my business card with my phone number and my email address, email address for the city.
Yeah.
I asked that she reach out to the manager or owner and have them get in contact with me. That hasn't happened. Okay?
Shut up.
Do you have any, do you have any stipulations on your license that prevents anyone in the kiosk from going outside and collecting litter on the ground at any time during your open hours?
No. Matter of fact, we have a landscaping company. They're supposed to be there once a week.
Okay.
We have two locations around here in Alene.
All right. You're responsible for maintaining the outside of your property?
Absolutely.
Okay, and your employees are responsible for maintaining the outside of the property?
Absolutely.
Okay, make sure that they're aware of that.
Sure.
Okay.
That's my job.
Thank you. Any questions for the gentlemen representing Noria?
I have one question.
Counselor Hogan?
We also have 535 Linway on here.
Yes, sir. Take that separate.
All right, you want to take it separate?
Yeah.
All right.
Any questions for 122 Boston Street?
I'll settle that one.
No? What's the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. We have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion or questions? None, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed. That license for 122 Boston Street has been approved.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, have a seat, please.
The next is 120-122 Liberty Street Speedway, open 24/7.
Okay, please come to the podium, state your name and your position with the Speedway at Liberty Street.
My name is Aldi. I'm the store manager there.
Store manager for Liberty Street Speedway, 122, 120, 122 Liberty Street?
122 Liberty.
You're open 24/7?
Yes.
Okay, that's what you're petitioning for? Do you, does your insurance binder allow employees to go outside to maintain the outside of the property?
Yes.
24 hours a day?
Yes.
So if I drive by there at 3:00 a.m.?
Probably overnight, they may not go outside. After 5:00 in the morning, they go outside and clean anything.
But they're 24 hours a day? So if something, if there's litter on the ground at 3:00 a.m., are they allowed to go outside to pick it up?
Yes, if anything, yeah.
Okay, there's nothing preventing them? No store rules? No insurance?
No, no. Probably overnight for security, for employee security. If anything not critical, they should not go outside, but from 5:00 in the morning until 10:00 a.m. afternoon. In the evening, everybody should go outside and check everything clean, make sure everything is clean.
I'm hearing you different than the question that I asked.
No.
Okay. If there's litter on the ground at 1:00 a.m., are they allowed to go outside to collect it, to pick it up? So it doesn't blow onto somebody else's property? Yes or no?
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they're not restricted from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. from going outside the kiosk?
Yeah, just we make sure employee, when they go outside overnight. Yeah, they, uh, just we make sure employee, when they go outside overnight, make sure the outside.
Right, it is your responsibility for their security.
Yes, yes.
Correct. Okay, so they're, if, if I drive by at 1:00 a.m., if I'm pumping gas, you're open, I stop, I get gas, there's litter on the ground, the employee, if I mention that to the employee, the employee can go outside and collect that?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for the gentlemen?
I, I got some to follow up here, I, I think I understand what he's saying, he's saying if it's safe for them to go outside, they will go outside and clean it.
Yeah.
And.
Understood.
The area he's talking about.
Yeah, understood.
They had to make sure that their safety is right, and I know he said they go out at 5:30 every morning, clean also, so.
Yep, understood.
But, we got it, thank you.
Any other questions? What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That license for 120-122 Liberty Street Speedway has been granted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And the last one we have is 535 Linway, Noria, 24/7.
24/7. Same questions, if, if I drive by, if I'm pumping gas at 3:00 a.m., there's litter on the property, I mention that to the clerk, there's no, there's no reason for them not to be able to go outside, correct?
Yes, except overnight. Sometimes our clerk, they close the door, they cannot go outside, they, they provide service only by the window.
Who's collecting the litter on the ground at 3:00 a.m.?
5 o'clock, the manager, she's in the store.
What time?
5.
If there's litter on the ground at midnight, who's collecting it?
Second shift people.
What time?
5, midnight.
Nobody can go outside at midnight?
They close the door for their safety.
So if that blows to the property across the street, I think it's a sitco across the street?
No.
Who's picking that up at midnight?
If there is a litter, they can go out, they can collect, there is no restriction to stop them.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Well, Counsel Field is saying it's just, we, we want to make sure these properties are clean, um, that's on the Linway right there, and, uh, trash blows all over the place, litter blows all over the place, we just want to make sure that it's clean. I drive by your place every day at about quarter, 5:00 in the morning on my way to work, so, um, I'll definitely be checking it out, so we definitely want to keep these areas clean, and that's, that's what he's doing, and I want to make sure these places.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Hogan? Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, any other discussion or questions? None, all in favor? Aye, opposed. That license is granted for 535 Linway, Noria, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a nice evening.
Okay, we have renewals.
Renewals, we'll take them as a whole if we can.
Yes, let's take them as a whole, please.
All right, what's the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
Motion approved, all.
Second.
Second, any discussion on any? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All of those are granted, we have one canning date.
We have Lynn English High School Cheerleaders, adults only, from August 8, 9, and 10, 2025.
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye, opposed. That canning date has been approved. And, any other business, Madam Clerk?
No other business.
Nope, and I just want to stop a per moment and just recognize Alan Juarez from the mayor's office, I appreciate you being here, um, to, for translation services during our licensing committee meeting, thank you. What's the wish of the committee?
A motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, any discussion? None, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We adjourn, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to the Ways and Mean Committee meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Counsel Net.
Present.
Present Counsel Hogan.
Present.
Present Counsel Chakutis. Absent. Counsel Walsh. Absent Counsel Field.
Present.
Present.
Uh, please, um, read transfer orders.
We have $109,500 from the Police Department expense to the Injured on Duty Medical Expense Fund.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis. Absent Counsel Walsh. Absent Counsel Field.
Yes.
Uh, next item, please.
$208,960 from the Fire Department expense to the Injured on Duty Medical Expense Fund.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis. Absent Counsel Walsh. Absent Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, certified orders, please.
Certified funds. $610,300 to the Police Department for the S.S.Y. Grant Fund, Safe and Successful Youth Initiative.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis. Absent Counsel Walsh. Absent Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $85,000 to the Police Department for the FY26 Behavioral Health Intervention Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis. Absent Counsel Walsh. Absent Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $25,000 to the Police Department for the FY26 Jail Arrest Diversion Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis. Absent Counsel Walsh. Absent Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $1,371,587 to the Police Department for the FY26 State 911 Support and Incentive Grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Counsel Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh. Absent Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $238,231 to the Police Department for the FY26 State 911 Regional PSAP Grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
$360,000 from National Grid to the Mayor's Office to fund the Municipal Energy Managers' Position.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $150,000 to the Health Department for the FY26 Prevention and Early Childhood Grant Program.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $82,000 to the Health Department for the FY26 COVID-19 Contract Race Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $12,207.92 to the Health Department for the FY26 Healthy Summer Youth Jobs Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
$12,772 to the Health Department for the SFY25 Community Transit Grant for a van with the city logo.
Motion approved.
Would you second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yep.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $202,370 to the School Department for the FY26 FC715C PPI Cohort Free Summer Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
$120,090 to the School Department for the FY26 Parent-Child Grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
$190,042 to the School Department for the FY26 FC237CFCE Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
$43,767 to the School Department for the FC253 Teacher Diversification Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
$72,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC64521CCLC Grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
$176,302 to the School Department for the FY26 Early College Teacher Diversification Grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Option and all other necessary documents with Golf Facilities Management, Inc., the successful bidder, to manage and operate the Gannon Municipal Golf Course Restaurant Banquet Hall.
What is the wish committee?
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Ordered that his honor, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a community development block grant recipient agreement between the Department of Community Development and the Lynn Municipal Finance Corporation for a term in excess of three years as it is required by mass general law.
What is the wish committee?
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Ordered that the city of Lynn hereby repurposes the sum of $7,800,000 originally appropriated to pay for the cost of a geothermal system for the new Pickering Middle School located adjacent to 58 Kenamo Ave in Lynn, Massachusetts, to now be available for unrestricted use in the construction of the new Pickering Middle School.
What is the wish committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Last one, please.
And the last is a discussion, a disclosure by municipal employees of financial interest in the municipal contract as required by mass general law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, Lynn Police Officer Brianna Anderson, as the Thurgood Marshall Middle School track and field coach.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Make a motion to abort on emergency for transfer orders. Make a roll call on that? No? Yes, okay.
Motion for emergency. Second.
Roll call on emergency for transfer orders.
Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Great, so any new business?
No new business.
No new business. What's the wish committee?
Motion adjourned. Second.
The meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Allenzog?
Present.
Present, Council Chakutis?
Present.
Present, Council Field?
Present.
Present, Council Hogan?
Present.
Present, Council Lapierre?
Present.
Present, Council Matul?
Present.
Present, Council McLean?
Present.
Present, Council Meany?
Present.
Present, Council Lapierre?
Present.
Present, Council Walsh?
Present. We all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for prayers for the family of Bradley Solis, 12-year-old boy who died in Guatemala with his grandmother two years ago while they were doing on vacation.
The Abbott-Athe family, remember them?
And the Sheehan family as well, Mr. President.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under the universal liberty of the Constitution and our law.
We have a motion to accept the minutes from June 24.
Motion to accept.
A motion to a sec. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Communications.
We have communications from his honor, the mayor. Dear councilors, I am hereby appointing the following members, all effective immediately. Reappointments to the Conservation Commission, Mary Luster, 482 Bay Road, Southampton, her term will expire May 22, 2028. Jocelyn Riad Amat, 67 Marion Street, her term will expire May 22, 2028. Brenda Mercia, 168 Euclid Ave, her term will expire May 22, 2027. Michael Toomey, 93 Judge Road, his term will expire May 22, 2028. Two new members to the Conservation Commission, Doriama Diaz, 5 Bull Finch Road, her term will expire May 22, 2026. Kyra Drescher, 14 Floyd Street, her term will expire May 22, 2028. To the Park Commission, a reappointment of Gerald Cashman, 16 Arbor Street, his term will expire May 1, 2028. A new appointment of Andrea Williams, 38 Endicott Street, her term will expire May 1, 2029. And to the Lynn Housing Authority Neighborhood Development Commission, we'll reappoint Kiara Palomares, 32 Grant Street, her term will expire May 25, 2028. Sincerely, Mayor Jared C. Nicholson.
It's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve them all, okay. The second discussion, roll call.
Sorry. Council Allenzog?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Council Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Council McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Council Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Council Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes. Public hearings.
The first public hearing we have is for 36 Range Ave, petition of Juliana Sedano, a personal trainer for permission to operate a fitness center in her home.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor in this, come on up to the podium. If you want to speak, is anybody here from the petitioner?
Speak in favor, yeah.
You want to come up and speak in favor of it? Yep, give us your name and address, please.
Okay, actually Lena Abdallah from Bridge Wells Women's Program, known as Project Coop on Johnson Street. We also have a program on Rogers Ave and a home for our graduates on Washington Street. Juliana actually serves our clients, she's been serving them for three years, and it's an important part of their recovery that they're able to exercise and take care of their health, and we're really grateful for her, so I wanted to be here today to say that she's, she goes beyond and serves actually the recovery community in Lynn, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone speak in favor? Scene on that part of the hearing is closed. Anybody want to speak in opposition to this? Come on up to the podium, give us your name and address.
My name's Craig Fannin. I live at 6 Indian Hill Road. I oppose the petition to operate the fitness center out of a residential home. I want to start by, I was confused about the notice for the hearing, it arrived Sunday afternoon, which I thought was weird because it's supposed to require two weeks prior notice to that, I thought, so I didn't have a ton of time to prepare for this. But since the business began, which she stated was three years ago, noncompliantly, we've had noise disturbances at 6 o'clock in the morning, loud music banging before 7:00 a.m., strangers parking on driveways and grass, trash left by customers, traffic congestion making it almost impossible for emergency vehicles to get down the street, and physical altercations with the homeowner. It's a residential neighborhood, it's not a commercial zone. From what I understand, the basement is what's being used as the gym, that constitutes 33% of the home. In Massachusetts, I'm understanding it's 20% is the absolute maximum, and they're not allowed to bring customers into the area. Approving this petition would legitimize an already noncompliant business and invite more commercial use into our homes and streets. For our safety and peace, I respectfully ask you to deny the petition.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Scene on that part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the council? Council Meany?
Would it be possible to have Juliana come up to the podium?
Can't hear you with the microphone. Hold the microphone, I'm sorry.
Would it be possible to have Juliana?
Come on up to the podium, okay.
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good. So I just, can you, in your own words, can you just give us like an overview of what currently is operating as far as your personal training business?
So I have, I have, actually I have a location in Marblehead, which is a big gym, and is where all my clients go. Lynn is one to two people, max, and it's the people that have anxiety, overweight, and don't want to be around a lot of people. 6:00 a.m., I've never ever had clients there at 6:00 a.m. I work out at 6:00 a.m., but I've never had clients there at 6:00 a.m. You know, and they don't, like, it'll be a day, I'll have one person come all day, or I'll have two people the next day. It's not, my business is in Marblehead. My gym that I rent is in Marblehead. Lynn is for private sessions, consoles, it's not, I don't have 20 people there, and people definitely do not leave trash, definitely, because I have cameras, 24-hour cameras in my house, with audio.
So if we, if we as a body were to limit your home business to two people at a time maximum, would that, would that inhibit what you're currently doing?
No, because I'm doing one to two. Two's max.
Okay.
I do personal sessions, and like in Lynn, that's just personal, one-on-ones.
And additionally, six, I mean, I'm, I've just, I've heard from a third party just now, 6:00 a.m. does seem a little early to be working out. Would it also be agreeable if we were to restrict the hours to starting at a minimum from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.? Would that work for you?
For my clients, yes, but for me to work out, I mean, no, I'm not.
Working out individually isn't a commercial enterprise.
Okay, okay, yeah, because I work out, I work out 6:30 every morning, I work out.
If I could, Dr. Meany, for one second, Council Meany, the application, if I could just, that she filled out says just one person at a time, it says here?
Yeah, one, you know.
And it says eight to five on the application. So just want to point that out, that's what she asked for.
I could do eight, you know, usually 5:30 I go to 5:15, 5:30, but if five is fine, six, you know, I don't, sometimes I start later. But we could do eight to five, if that's what's on the application, we'll just do eight to five.
Well, eight to five works, so what I'm getting at is you have to understand just the bigger picture, you know, you're trying to run a business, but other people want to live in their home, and I'm not saying that you're a disturbance to the neighborhood in any way, but you know, 6:00 a.m. is rather early, and so.
Yeah, I've never had anybody there at 6:00 a.m., never. I have cameras all over my house. Never I have had anybody there at 6:00 a.m.
And then, based on your previous email, you said that you're actively searching for a Lynn location.
Yep, I am.
How's that progress?
Because I want to stay in Lynn, because I serve the community. I do St. Mary's, I do Lynn English, I work with the kids, the seniors, and the women in recovery, so I do want to stay in Lynn.
Okay. Do I have any more questions for you? Thank you.
Council Walsh? Council Hogan, go ahead.
Yes, so if you found a gym in Lynn, you would cease to use your home for clients?
Yeah, I'd just use it for me. It'll be just for me.
All right, so, and you are actively looking in Lynn for a location?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you.
Council Walsh?
Council McLean?
Juliana, can you just speak to the congestion and the loud music that was reported?
There wasn't loud music. I have music, but I've shut the door and I put it max, and you cannot hear anything. I've recorded it on my phone before all this happened. I'm like, let me see if I'm really bothering somebody, because if I'm doing something wrong, I'm doing something wrong. Like, I can't, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. You can't hear nothing.
And the congestion on the street for one or two people?
What was that?
Congestion, the traffic that was mentioned by the.
Yeah, but I have parking, like, I have my garage, they would either park there or in front of my house. Yeah, and then the grass that he mentioned is, street is for this, it's Lynn, it belongs to, it's street parking. Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't belong to him. Yeah. We actually have construction trucks all over there right now, it does not bother, I mean, it doesn't bother me, it's Lynn, belongs to Lynn, shouldn't bother anybody.
Council Chakutis?
I know, I was speaking with Juliana, and I know she's working with EDIC also looking for, EDIC is helping her to look for a place in the city for her, so she is working with people.
Okay. What's the wish of the council then? Council Meany?
I'd like to file a motion to approve contingent on two points. One, that we, it's, the hours are limited to eight to five, and then we're going to maximum restrict this to two people. Furthermore, I'd like to make this tentative of a six-month review, where six months from now, we're going to see what the progress is, how's it going, how's it affecting the neighbor, and where we're at as far as getting yourself a Lynn facility.
So that's the motion you made?
Just the motion.
Also, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Councilor Allenzog?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
No.
Yes, Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lapierre?
No.
Council Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Council McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Council Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Council Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could I ask Council Field?
No.
Thank you.
Those two noes. Motion carries the six-month review. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next public hearing.
Okay, we have 450 Essex Street, petition of Carlos Vills and Dee Patrias-Pata to convert a two-family house to a three-family.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Come on up to the podium, give us your name and your address, please.
Hello? Yes, I'm Carlos Vida, the property was previously originally.
Sorry, just give us your name and your address.
Carlos Vida, 450 Essex Street.
Okay, thank you.
So the property was originally constructed as a three-family. In 1995, was converted to a two-family, they're converting to a two-family, we just want to convert it back. All the egresses are there, all the, the structure of each level is pretty much a different apartment. All they did to turn the second and third floor into one unit was put a door in front of the stairs. Literally, that's all they did. So the conversion's pretty simple, there's nothing that's going to be going on outside, we have plenty of parking. We were previously in the CBD sector of zone, and then with the new regulations or whatnot, we were changed. I got a letter saying that we no longer needed special permit or zoning variance for it. So, yeah, the property's pretty much already a three-family, it's just that I want to legalize it.
Okay, all right. Have a seat, and if anyone has any questions, let me come back up, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else in favor? Scene on the part of the hearing is closed. Anybody in opposition to this? Is there anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Scene on that part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the council? Councilor Maggi Maggi?
Thank you very much. Yes, I've met with the petitioner, and I've seen the property, and I've talked to neighbors, and I am in support of this.
To make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Your motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Allenzog?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Council Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Council McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Council Meany?
Thank you.
Council Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes. Motion carries. We're all set. Thank you. Next public hearing.
We have a public hearing for bonds for various projects, including lighting up McManus Field, heavy-duty snow vehicles, ambulance, heating systems at English High School, Lynn Tech, and Frazier Field.
Does the clerk have to read the entire bond? Okay, okay, so, all right, so we're going to have a public hearing for us, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of the bond? Anybody want to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Scene on the part of the hearing is closed. Anybody in opposition to the bond? Anybody in opposition? Any opposition? Scene on that part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the council? Council Field?
Can we just make sure that Frazier Field's listed here?
It's there. I checked before we even got started tonight because it was missing. So, Council Hogan?
Yes, before I make a motion to approve, I just want to say, good work with Council Field on including Frazier Field into this here. Council Walsh, Mayor McManus, Mayor Nicholson on McManus Park. Much needed, we're getting a state-of-the-art facility. The lights weren't included at first, and now, after this meeting, the lights will be included in this project. It will be a state-of-the-art athletic complex, one of the best on the North Shore, and that's going to be right in our city of Lynn. I think our kids deserve it, the athletes deserve it, and the people in Lynn deserve a place like this here, and I just want to thank everybody involved in this project, and I thank my colleagues too, also. So thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
So a motion to approve, we have a second. Any discussion on it? Council Field?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I just want to echo Councilor Hogan's words. Thank you to all our colleagues in the council for supporting this, Mayor Nicholson's office, I know. I'm just going to give you one example about how important Frazier Field and Manning Field are to the city. We approved a bond to resurface those fields just a few years back, and the use that those two fields get, this past spring, well, let's circle back to last fall, where if you attended any games at Manning Field, you could notice in the outfield at Frazier Field how many teams were utilizing the entire field for practice, whether it was a soccer, soccer practice for any of the high schools, football practice for any of the high schools or whatnot. That's how important it was to turf those fields. In this past spring, I went to a baseball game that was starting at 2:30 for one of the local public schools. It poured until 1:30. That game still started at 2:30 because of the responsible investment that we made to Frazier Field particularly. It was sad to see that the only thing that hadn't been upgraded were those lights. And for the past number of years, the lights on those poles were unable to be replaced. It went from the right-field pole going from 18 lights down to about eight or nine active lights a few years ago, and currently, I want to say, there's five of the 18 lights that are working on that pole. So this is much-needed work to make those two facilities really reach their full potential. So I appreciate and encourage everybody's support for this project, and to yourself and Councilor Hogan for pushing through with McManus Field. It's just, it's a solid A for all these kids that want someplace to go and coaches, and everybody deserves it, so thank you.
All right, I just, if I could for a moment, not to drag it out, but as a father of a student who plays sports, she, we have to travel around a lot, and I see a lot of different places, and to be honest, I get kind of envious of those places, and I wonder why we can't have those things here sometimes. So I think when you run for office and you get to these spots, and you're a dad or a mom, or a guardian, you know, I think you want that, you want the best for your kids, you know, so I think we're in a position here to try to make some of those things a little bit better for everybody. And, you know, I want to echo that the mayor's office, I see Mike Bertino's here in the back of the room tonight, thank you, Mike, I know you guys, you know, everyone's had a part in this, Denier Smith's here tonight, he worked on a lot of things from the mayor's office, even Jim Laana, City Attorney. There's a lot of people involved in this, it's just not, you know, we might take a vote here tonight and make a decision on it, and I applaud everybody to vote for it if we could, but I, it takes a lot of people to put this together, and, you know, we need another turf field with lights, and that's what we're going to get, and we've been pushing, and it's not perfect, you know, in a lot of ways, there's a lot of bumps in the roads with these things, but it takes a lot of, you know, a lot of work to get here, so I'll leave it at that, and if there's no more discussion from anybody, I'm going to ask for a roll call. Could we read the bond?
Proposed order, the 8 million is appropriated to pay costs of replacing the heating system at the Lynn English High School and Lynn Vocational and Technical Institute, including the payments of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the city treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the general laws, pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore, and that the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out this project. Proposed further order, that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to provide, to pay such costs by a like amount. Proposed further order, that the treasurer is hereby authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any and all bonds of the city authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this loan order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection therewith. $1,232,750, two heavy-duty snow removal vehicles and one ambulance. Proposed orders to appropriate to pay costs of purchasing two heavy-duty removal vehicles and one ambulance, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the city treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the general laws, pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the city therefore, and that the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out this project. Further proposed order, that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premium applied to the payment of such cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Proposed further order, that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any and all bonds of the city authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this loan order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection thereof. $2,350,000 for new lighting at Frazier Field and McManus Field. This order is proposed to appropriate to pay costs of installing new lighting at Frazier Field and McManus Field, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the city treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the general laws, pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore, and that the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out this project. and that the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out this project. Proposed further order, that any premium received by the city under the sale of the bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Proposed further order, the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any and all bonds of the city authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this loan order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection therewith.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, no more discussion, roll call.
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Motion carries. I think, I think we'll look back and say this is all going to be money well spent. I know we were looking at the POCs and stuff, but there is some snowfighting equipment in here that I think that everyone's going to benefit from too, but it takes like a year or so to see that equipment built and brought in.
You might say, Mr. President, this levels the playing field between East Lynn and West Lynn now.
I don't know about that. I mean, you know...
Come on, give me credit for that.
Do you want to open that up for discussion, Counsel? All right, all right.
And an ambulance.
Oh, and an ambulance, okay. All right, cool. Is there any other public hearings?
No other public hearings.
We have a public hearing to set down?
We have one public hearing to set down, to set down a public hearing for $9 million for the new Pickering Middle School bond order.
Motion to set it down.
We have a motion to set it down? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, set it down, all right.
Set it down.
Moving along. Committees, Public Property and POCs, Counsel Jakutis.
A unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries. Utilities, Counsel Allenson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three public hearings, four wards, three, six, and seven. We have unanimous vote by the committee, motion to approve.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion approved, it was second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving right along. Licensing, Counsel Field.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a unanimous vote by our committee, I make a motion to approve them.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Ways and Means, Counsel Net.
Yes, Mr. President, unanimous vote of the committee, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve. Will the clerk read, second, will the clerk read the transfers?
Okay. We have two transfer orders, $109,500 to the Police Department for the Injured on Duty Fund, $208,960 to the Fire Department for the Injured on Duty Fund. Certified orders, $610,300 to the Police Department for the S.S.Y. Grant Funds, $85,000 to the Police Department for the FY26 Intervention Fund, $25,000 to the Police Department for the FY26 Jail Arrest Program, $1,371,858,000 to the Police Department for the FY26 911 Grant, $238,231 to the Police Department for the FY26 State 911 PSAP Grant, $360,000 National Grid to fund the Municipal Energy Manager Position, $150,000 to Health Department for the FY26 Childhood Grant, $82,000 to Health Department for the FY26 COVID-19 Program, $12,207,92 to the Health Department for the FY26 Jobs Grant Program, $12,772 to the Health Department for the SFY25 Community Transit Grant for a van with a city logo, $202,370 to the School Department for the FY26 Summer Grant Program, $120,090 to the School Department for the FY26 Parent-Child Grant, $190,042 to the School Department for the FY26 Grant Program, $43,767 to the School Department for the FC253 Diversification Program, $72,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC64521 CCLC Grant, $176,302 to the School Department for the FY26 Early College Grant. And we have the following orders. Order that his honor the mayor and the Lynn Board of Park Commissions are hereby authorized to execute a five-year lease agreement with a one-year mutual option and all necessary documents with Gulf Facilities Management to manage and operate the Gannon Municipal Golf Course, Restaurant, Bankard Hall. Order that his honor the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient Agreement between the Department of Community Development and the Lynn Municipal Finance Corporation for a term in excess of three years as it is required by the Mass General Law. Order that the city of Lynn hereby repurposes the sum of $7,800 originally appropriated to pay for the cost of the geothermal system for the new Pickering Middle School located adjacent to 51 Conoma Ave in Lynn, should now be available for unrestricted use in the construction of the new Pickering Middle School. And the last one is a discussion, a disclosure by municipal employee of the financial interest in a municipal contract as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, Lynn Police Officer Brianna Anderson as the Thurgood Marshall Middle School Track and Field Coach.
All right, so we had a motion, we had a second, discussion on any of that? Roll call.
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Was there an emergency on that, Counsel Net?
Yes, Mr. President, the committee voted for emergency on transfer orders only, and I make a motion to approve.
A motion on the emergencies?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.